I'm going to call the February eighteenth, five o'clock Board of Selectmen's meeting and I'm gonna call it to order. Um, the first thing on the agenda that we have, first of all, is anybody taped in the meeting? Okay, okay. Um, also, um, we'll just go over the agenda really quick. We have a couple of things under Board of Selectmen. Um, we'll be talking about, um, several of the triathlons that we're gonna be having in town. We'll go over the chapter ninety review, um, final reports, then we have some things from Board of Health and the Personnel Board. We will not be going into executive session tonight, so we're hoping that this meeting goes quickly and smoothly. Alright, first thing up, we have letter of support for the South Coast Neighbors United. This is something that we talked about the last time, um, and we asked you to put together a letter.
I did, and I sent it to, um, Wendy Garcia this morning, and she made one small change to it, which included in the health, the potential release of ELCs and heavy metal, which wasn't in the original letter. In addition to the danger of exposure of poly, I can't say that, substances, PSF, or forever chemicals. You had a change on the revised letter that was included, um, in an email to you today, and there's also another one in the pa- that with the blue is?
Yes.
Yeah, it's in the packet, so.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to accept. So, do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, second thing on the agenda, um, we'll go right into the Council on Aging regarding the building. So if you would like to come up, that would be great. Ginnett, you wanna come up? Okay, I know where you are.
Well, we, uh, we've been discussing the additions on the building that, you know, we've talked about since last July.
Excuse me, Lisa.
Yes.
Could you ask, could you ask Bruce to speak up a little bit? I can't quite hear.
I mentioned about the building that we had talked about about a year ago, uh, maybe in July of last year, about the addition going out the front. Uh, we, at that time, we just talked about the, uh, second floor coming out. But discussion over the last six months, um, some feel that the whole front, this whole section should go, should go out fourteen feet. So it'd be fourteen feet by twenty-four. So I guess what we're doing is just, uh, uh, we thought the Board of, the Board of Directors on the Council on Aging felt that we wanted to come and let you know that we're proceeding with it. We, we will be submitting a petition, uh, to go before the town meeting. So that's pretty much.
Should I? Um, so, I understand, and, and I think I, I changed my view, 'cause before, I'm only one person, right? So there's a building committee, and if you're gonna bypass that committee, um, first of all, I'm not sure if it's legal. So we would have to check with that. Second of all, um, I don't, I've changed a lot of my perception about this, and I know that you guys want this building now, and I get that, because you're running out of room, and I, and I totally understand that. My feeling is, I think we wanna see where the police station end stops, and whatever money we can save from that and put into capital stabilization, then we can take some money out of capital stabilization and build you an addition. Because I don't know if there's gonna be an appetite for a two million dollar project without taking it out of capital stabilization. I talked to the building inspector the last time. It's not four hundred thousand dollars. It's not. And you, and Bo- anybody can call him and ask him, um, because he even said it, it would be between a two and a three million dollar project. That's his feeling. So, I, I would like to see it move forward. I would like to see it come at the fall town meeting and do, we're gonna have to get a project manager. It's by law, anything over one point five million dollars, you have to have a project manager. We, those are things that we can't bypass. I would like to see, I would like us to trim our budgets this year. Um, I, I think we have a, we've been exceeding things and going to spend more money instead of saving it in capital stabilization. And I think that we need to see that. I'd like to see how much money we can save from the police station and put that money towards building an addition onto this building. That's how I feel right now. You can do however you wanna proceed. I, I understand that. I, and you might get the support. I don't know that. I'm just saying, I'd like to all be on the same page instead of presenting this in almost like in turmoil. That's what I don't want. Th- those are much of my feelings.
Okay. Uh, what I think I would like to see done, if we could sooner the better, because there's a big discrepancy here on what the perceptions are of how much this project is going to cost. I'd like to make a motion that we fund, uh, whatever it would take to, to get a good estimate from an architect or.
Okay, uh, you guys, if, I, I'm not hearing anything George is saying.
Okay.
If you could speak up a little bit.
We need more microphones then.
Okay.
'Cause I can't.
I'm not hearing anything you're saying.
Do you wanna move that through?
You could probably move the iPad closer. Can we do that?
So.
I'd like to elaborate a little bit more on what you're saying.
This is what, that's, this is why you're here, right? To have an open discussion.
We came, well, the reason I'm here is because we didn't wanna blindside anyone.
Mm-hmm.
Just put that on the table. Because if you look back a year ago, we proposed putting an article for fifteen thousand dollars on the, on the warrant to, and I don't like to use the word feasibility, because that word feasibility has been kicked around for twenty years. I mean, when I was selecting, we did a feasibility study with all the departments. About two long ago, you all did a feasibility study. Well, I don't feel as though that fifteen thousand dollars was a feasibility study, but what it was is a, a start to look at the building, see what we had to do, maybe do a, a brief design layout and things of that nature. But, that being said, the Board of Selectmen took it off the warrant. I felt that was wrong because of the fact that, I, I've always felt this my whole career, politically or whatever. The Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Council on Aging, it should've, I felt it should've went to, before the taxpayers to let them decide what they wanna do. It was only fifteen thousand dollars at the time, you know? So, when I went back to the board, we felt the same thing, you know, uh, and we didn't have an opportunity to even present our case to the taxpayers, which to me, they're the ones that are gonna make the decision, one way or the other. The number that you came up with, I don't know where, I mean, the bill inspector didn't say anything to me about that, and we've talked about that a number of times. The focus is not on the addition right now anyways, you know, it's other ways, yeah. So, uh, my numbers is probably half of what you've got right now, and I've talked to some contractors, but I know the process, uh, needs to take its course through the, through the, you know, the government, obviously. You know, it's gotta be the project manager and all that stuff. So, that being said, uh, we, we wanted to go to town meeting. Whatever number we come up with, which, right now, we've come up roughly about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, the addition is only gonna go out fourteen feet and gonna go from the alcove over to the side of the building.
Bruce, you're going to town meeting with a number of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars with no engineering plans. You have, the first thing you have to do is get a project manager. That's the first thing you have to do.
I don't know that. I mean, you, you know that.
Right.
And, and I, I'll take you for what you, what you're saying. But, you know, we wanna move forward with this. And we, we thought that we, we put the fifteen thousand dollars out there to do something, to start something, and it was taken off the board, taken off the floor.
Because it wasn't enough money. It truly was not enough money.
It would've been enough money to get a, I don't wanna say that, use that word feasibility again.
Yeah, but that was already done, and you had that.
No, it wasn't done. No, it was not done. It wasn't done. It, what was done was, after we submitted that, you wanted, you wanted to go to the building committee, which, okay, we understand that. When it got to the building committee, you discussed it, I was at that meeting.
Right.
And you talked about going to other, you talked about starting a project that would've cost probably five or six million dollars, if not more than that. Because you, with, with the billing, no, you perceived.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't wanna put it on you.
Yeah, alright.
But the building committee wanted to go out there, and they wanted to research a Council on Aging and a library together, which would've cost the town well more than one million dollars if we do this project, if it does in fact cost one million dollars. So, we, we didn't feel that was even a, a thing we even should've talked about. You got a project going on with the police department that's costing twelve million. Then you're gonna ask the taxpayers to pay another, you know, eight or nine million for a COA and a library together? I mean, if you look at the Hanson, which is the, the only one, we've looked at it.
I did call around, there aren't a lot of them.
We looked at the one at Hanson. If you look, oh, just put on the internet, look at the building. That's no, that's a, that's gotta be a twelve million dollar project right there. So, what we were asking for is simply just an addition on there to be able to give us two more rooms, or three rooms, to, to be able to offer our seniors and continue to have their programs that we have. And then, of course, now it's getting, now it's gotten to a point where they wanna put, you know, this discussion with the building department also, about doing the first floor as well, pushing this whole section out. Now, that could get costly. My initial thought, or our initial thought, was to just bring the top floor out fourteen feet, the whole length of this alcove, not the whole length of the building. Now, that there, if that's gonna cost one million dollars, uh, I'd be surprised. I'd be surprised. But, I mean, if we got the fifteen thousand dollars, we could've got some engineering costs, we could've got some pricing, we could've done a little more studying on what we could do. So, we didn't get it. So now, the board said, you know, we'd like to go and put a petition, get it on the floor at the town meeting, let the taxpayers decide. If the Board of Selectmen don't want it, or the Finance Committee don't want it, we're prepared to get up on town floor and debate it, and let the taxpayers decide what they wanna do, after they've heard pros and the cons, which is the way democracy is supposed to work. So I appreciate your comments and that, you know, but we're, we're gonna move forward with this, you know? Because since the building committee meeting August fifteenth to now, did, did any of the building committee go look at any buildings around, which we only probably got one?
No, there was only one. There was only one.
But has anybody gone to see that in six months?
No.
So, you know, it's, it's the same thing. I don't really think the, anybody on that building committee, or the majority of that building committee, did not want this senior senate to have an addition at that time.
That's correct.
Okay, so, it makes sense that nothing would get done, because when you don't want something, you sit back and you don't do anything.
No, that's, that's unfair, okay?
I, I think it is too. I do.
It's unfair, because that's not what the building committee voted on. The building committee voted on to look at buildings that had both a COA and a library. Because we're only gonna have one shot at this, and that was our feeling, like, if we're gonna do this, let's do it the right way. Not piecemeal, like any of the other buildings were done in town, okay? Let's do it the right way. The same way that the police station was done. It was done the right way, after, after, um, I don't know, a year-long of meetings with the, with the police station building committee, with, um, going and getting a, a project manager the correct way, with getting an architect and getting an engineer, that's the right way. And then we presented it to the townspeople, and we had all our answers. If you throw out that this, and I'm not, I'm not, look, I said now, I took a step back, and I said, let's, let's put an addition on this building. But I also don't wanna put a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar addition on it and come out to find out that it, not enough money, that we have to upgrade all the electrical in here, that we have to get an elevator in here, that we don't have the right architectural plans, that we need a project manager. I don't wanna find that out after we go to the townspeople and ask for five fifty, because the first thing they're gonna do is, do you have a plan? No, we don't.
Oh, Lisa, I would suggest that we fund whatever architectural cost it would be, so that we know what we're talking about, to see what they want, to see if it's realistic. I feel that it is realistic. I think we've short, shortchanged the COA for years, and I think something should be done. And we, we can't just be kicking the ball down the road, so.
I agree, but I, don't you think that we should find out what the police station is gonna cost us? And in the fall, go forward with that? We don't know how much money we have.
We have the funding, okay? And it, I don't think that that's an issue. If, if this extension falls within the parameters that we're hearing, half a million, tax a minor, a hundred thousand or whatever, I think we can go ahead with it. The police station construction won't interfere with that as far as funding. And, uh, I think we should move ahead, and at least find out what's going on.
Here's my suggestion, Lisa. We're, we're gonna move forward and put the, submit the warrant, the article, petition.
For the fifteen thousand?
No, we're going for the five hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
Okay, now, that doesn't mean we, we have to do it. I mean, if we get started on it, that's gonna give us from now till June, right? Am I correct? To do our due diligence, to see what it possibly is gonna cost, okay? I've been told by a couple of contractors, and I realize what you're saying, because I know you, it is more to it than just, if, if we own this place, you know, you put it, put it up in that cemetery, then it probably wouldn't even cost five hundred thousand dollars. But, it is what it is. So, between now and town meeting, I think we can come up with a, a, we, we've got the plan. Or, if I, if we said to a, an engineer, oh, I need a design, we know what we want. We know what we can do. Not what we want. We know what we can do. We can't do any more than what we're asking to do. And that's go out fourteen feet and coming across, uh, forty-two feet, pretty much. And that's all we can do. You can't do anymore.
I, I wish it were as simple as that. You do what you have to do, and I, and I totally commend you and the, and the senior citizens of COA for it. I get that. I will work with you, on the side of you, from now until town meeting, to get the right figures. So that's.
If the numbers come over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if we get an engineer to look at it, give us an estimate or give us a price, if it comes up to less than fi- five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then would you be willing to say, okay, let's do it?
We'll take it out of capital stabilization. You'd have to put a warrant out on it, yeah. We, we can't take it out of taxation. We'd have to take it out of stabilization.
If it comes over that, then may, we'll have to take a back, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll table the meeting at our meeting.
We'll get an estimate as to what a project manager's gonna cost. We'll get a roundabout figure on what we think the building project will cost, and we'll go from there.
Alright, then we'll move forward as well.
Okay, but if we can get that ironed out before the warrant articles are submitted, or you can submit it anyway, we'll withdraw it if we have to, and then we'll put it in as, um, a warrant article if we find, if we find out what all of this is, with the magic. You can move forward. I'm gonna move forward too.
No, no, I mean, I, listen, I'd rather not we move forward and you move forward.
Right.
I'd rather let's us move forward.
We move forward, right, and that's exactly the same page we're on.
Because the ultimate goal is to do what we need to do, to at least for the next ten years.
Right.
Satisfy what we can do.
The only reason I'm, and I'm not trying to be hard, what I'm trying to do is, I'm, you know, back then, when this building was first built, it was so easy. It's not easy anymore.
Well, it was, it was.
Right? Right? I mean, it was easier. It's not like that anymore. There are, there's a lot of red tape and a lot of stuff going on that we also have to make sure. And you know as well as I do, 'cause you've been here before, and we did it with, and we did it with the schools and the police station, but the first thing they're gonna do is, do you have a plan? What's your plan? What's it gonna cost? How much? And blah, blah, blah. So we need to have all those, those questions answered.
Well, if we went forward without the support of the Board of Selectmen or the Finance Committee, and we did go forward to town meeting, we would have the drawings and a set of plans at town meeting.
But you can't, they have to be, you can't go in, you can't go out and get your own architect. You can't.
I'm, I'm, I'm not saying I'm gonna get my own, we're gonna get our own architect, but we'll have the perception, a conception of what this is gonna look like. We'll have the floor space that we know what it is, and this will be done before town meeting. So when we, if it goes to town meeting, we will have, uh, a conceptual drawing of what we're asking for at town meeting, one way or the other. And then, you know, I mean, and work from that point on.
Charlie, you have anything?
Well, yes, um, I, I, I wanna see that the Council on Aging gets, gets a building. But I'm very leery about Bruce's plan there, because, um, it's only gonna fix something for a few years. I think we had spoken before, we had one building committee meeting, I think we need to have a building committee meeting, another one, and start to move forward with a, with a plan. And, but we'll see what the, where the money, um, has to come from, or what the amount will be. I, I don't think we want to start out just shooting out on, on something that's gonna, I, I know, uh, some members of the council were upset with my using it, their plan is saying it was a Band-Aid, but I, I see it as a Band-Aid. And I think we should be moving forward with a, a building that will be able to be used for years and years. Uh, yes, I, I understand their frustration. I'm frustrated myself on how slowly this moved on. But, I think we wanna come up with something that's going to be able to be used for fifty years. Okay, I think we should, uh, have a, call another building committee meeting, get a firm idea from the, from the committee what they want to do. Br- uh, you know, Bruce, I, I hope you come to it and, uh, argue your argument. I'm just saying, I wanna see something done that will last for, uh, a, a very long time. And I think we, we do have the financial ability, uh, coming in the near future to handle that. So that's my opinion on that.
Okay, and George, you wanna go forward, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Alright, so, alright, so, we're all gonna work towards that one goal, try to have an answer before town meeting. We'll have a building committee meeting and try to all get on the same page. I know you're gonna work on the side of that too. That's fine. I don't have a problem with that. But you and I will be in contact and move, and get better numbers, okay?
Okay.
Alright.
So, that's all we can ask. Like I said, I, the only thing, you know, we could've just submitted the article, right? The town clerk could have it.
I want it to pass. I don't want it to get shot down.
But that's why we're here, because we felt it was important to let the Board of Selectmen know what, what's going on. You know, obviously, we kinda felt bad about the fifteen grand being shot down. And then at the, at the building committee meeting, they wanted to go out and spend, and, and we all know that the, the way that that pro- that discussion was going, we're not talking about a one million dollar project. You know, if you combine a library with a COA, you're probably talking a project that's gonna cost the same as the police department.
No, it's, it's, about, about seven.
Seven million.
Mm-hmm.
Now.
Because it would be.
As a taxpayer in town, and you come at me with twelve million, then you, then two years later, you come out with seven million, I, I'd probably not vote that at all, you know?
Alright, but we paid for half of that building.
Yeah.
By saving money. We would probably do the same thing, but anyway, we're going off, off.
Right.
Tangent right now, so.
What, what will you have to remember is that people did vote, uh, a super majority on the police station, and the police station's being built and being done, right? And that's where, I, I just wanna make that statement, okay?
Yeah, okay. Alright, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, um, I'm gonna move, if you guys don't mind, I'm gonna move up to police station. If you guys, Taylor, Andy. Ian, can you just start off giving us an update on the police station, so I don't have to do it later? On where we are and what we're doing, either one of you?
Sure. Uh, it's going well. We, basically drywalling. Some of the subcontractors are still ongoing, but, um, the board is being hung. Say the board is at about forty-five percent hung. After the board is hung, we'll just be into interior finishes and, um, starting in about two or three weeks, the site contractor will remobilize, start finishing up the site.
Perfect.
That's in a nutshell where at. The, um, the exterior is probably about seventy percent done. Uh, the, the biggest holdup on that is, uh, moving forward, uh, you can see that the wood frame portions are all being sided and are starting to appear a hundred percent finished. But, um, the weather barrier on the CMU for the detention in Sallyport area is fluid applied, and temperature is sensitive, so we just haven't gotten that string of temperatures yet. We think it will happen in early March.
And precipitation sensitive too. It can't be wet.
Right.
And, and then, um, so, the siding, uh, the roof is ninety-five percent, and now the siding is, they're getting close to fifty percent, and they're going around the front and the wood portions, and we'll head back towards the, um, uh, CMU portion, which is detention in Sallyport.
So you feel you're on schedule?
Yes, we're, um, we're on schedule. The, um, and that building is already insulated, because it's all continuous on the outside, both roof and walls. Uh, windows are set, so, um, we have, um, a very tight envelope already that we're working inside. Uh, steel stairs, uh, the egress stairs from the upper level were installed two weeks ago, and, um, it's going well.
Yeah, they're just using one temporary, um, heater in there, propane-fed heater, and it's probably about seventy to seventy-five degrees in there, especially on the second floor. It's extremely warm.
Yeah, the, the unit's set to fifty-five, but it gets a lot warmer in there.
Our next police station, um, building committee is on the twenty-seventh of February, and we're gonna supposedly do a tour of the building.
Yeah, next Thursday.
Yes.
Coming Thursday.
Yeah, I took a tour with Carlton.
Okay.
About a week ago, so.
Yikes. La, 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 la.
What's wrong with it?
No, it's fine. I have not toured the building.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
So, so, I, I, what I wanted to just preface this by saying that, uh, we had had a meeting, this is moving on to the other subject regarding the carport, uh, with Industrial Communications, with the contractor, H.B. Collins, and we discussed, uh, we were specifically interested in finding out a timeline and how the scheduling of H.B. Collins and, and Industrial Communications would basically mesh together. And there were some concerns about, uh, the permitting, which we, I think we got all worked out. Uh, the permit is, the hearing, I believe it's March fourth at six p.m. There is a twenty-day appeal period, so, uh, there was concern about that, but we've since learned that the permitting doesn't really impact the pouring of the foundation or the placement of the conduit. It only relates to the actual height of the tower, so we're okay there. But the concern had, that had been brought up was that H.B. Collins was going to, uh, be doing work on that side of the building relative to the carport, and how we could sort of mesh the foundation in the conduit with when they're working on that side of the building, so they're not doing stuff, then tearing it up, and then doing stuff again. So we're kind of at a decision point in terms of where we need to be.
Yeah, the, the contractor, Andy, myself.
They expressed a concern.
We, we met today, actually.
Oh, alright.
To go over, um, all the comments from that meeting, um, and we conferenced in.
When was that meeting?
When was it? Today?
No, the other night.
It was last week.
Last.
It was a week ago today.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, we conferenced in, um, Industrial as well, and, and you're right, we were looking at that side of the building where we have the tower going and the proposed carport, and that's what we were here tonight to talk about. And, uh, the carport was a add alternate in our original bid, that we chose to at the time not move forward on uh, because of, you know, pricing, you know, so we wanted to save that money, and it wasn't moved forward on. Now that we've started to recognize savings in our budget, um, and we're really out of the risk, um, side of the project, I mean, walls are being ported up at this point, so, um, that risk level has really, you know, come down. You know, we've, we've now been asked by the committee to look back at the carport, and what's it gonna take to get that carport back in?
Yeah, so, i- i- in a public project, one way of controlling costs is add alternates. So, the, the cop, the cruiser port, I like to call it a cruiser port. The cruiser port was part of the original design, but it was bid out as an add alternate. It's a way to control costs. On a public project, we can't just ask for bids and then, by the way, say, oh, can you give us a price for a cruiser port? You can't do that if it's not in there from the beginning, without having to rebid it as a whole separate project.
And the add alternates both have to be in sequence. Like, you can't pick the third add alternate and go for the first one.
Yeah.
Right. So from the beginning, we wanted a cruiser port, but to err on the conservative side, we did it as an al- add alternate, because if things, um, you know, if, if there were a lot of unforeseen things, such as when you're excavating and whatnot, and the costs aren't going too well, um, you simply don't do it. But it's already in the system, locked and loaded, if things are going okay, and you can come back and choose to do it. So that's why we're here tonight. Things are going okay. Um, we've, um, you know, we have copious contingency money left, and we've, we're gonna, we, we've, uh, got pricing back now on the other things that were outside of the contractor, but in our budget, such as furniture, uh, radios and things like that, and we're actually seeing that savings. And we're actually seeing that savings are gonna come back from those out of the original budget that was approved. But uh we're at a point now where um we we have to make a decision to move forward with the cop port or not. Or it simply would not be achievable within um with the contract that's on site without having to remobilize and everything else. So we're here tonight to uh ask for approval on this cruiser port.
And this, and we're here because the committee had asked us to bring this forward to the the police station building committee. The foundation of the carport had already been approved by the committee. So if you decide to do nothing, the foundation and conduit provisions to the area will be installed by by the contractor. There'll just be no structure there, which could be installed at a different time. So we're really here just asking um or on behalf of the committee, but to install the structure portion of the carport.
So I've I've hatched and read where the cruiser port is. Again, which was part of the design, uh all the engineering uh that goes along with it is there.
What what is all that space next to that, the parking space?
Here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what you're seeing is um the the cruiser port is a six-vehicle cruiser port to park six vehicles. This space, uh, the spaces over here is mostly parking um for the officers when they come into work. This is all uh police parking and cruiser parking, this is the public parking over here. So um these spaces represent enough spaces for two shifts because the officers coming in are gonna, you know, the officers that are on haven't left yet and um the ones coming in need to park also, so that's their parking lot over there. And this would be the six-vehicle cruiser port port hatched out and red.
Yeah, it's become pretty typical in in New England. Um, it's instead of building a full garage, you get a carport and it's protected from the elements, you know, for the cruisers that are on, you know, duty, not patrolling the streets.
Is this a typical carport with just a roof?
Uh, it's a roof and of course it has lighting, it has to be sprinkled, so it's got a dry sprinkler system inside, um framed out of steel. Uh, with concrete pier foundation and fiber cement cladding with a membrane roof.
To fiber clad is the roof?
What's that?
To fiber cladding is the roof?
No, the fiber cladding is all the soffit underneath, the fascias, the roof is TPO membrane, a white TPO membrane.
And how much is this project?
The cop, the the cruiser port, from memory, is two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-six cents, am I right?
To cover six cars?
So the the cruiser port, that that's backed out, so um it's two hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred.
No, no, that's without, that's that's without the um contractors.
No, that was the full change, yeah.
So Taylor can verify that, two twenty-nine, three seventy-eight and twenty-six.
It's two, two fourteen, one fifty, one oh five. That's from HVAC with markup. Did he, did he notch a list of the same one? Oh, Andy is correct.
Uh, what is what is the cost of that number?
Um, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-six cents.
And backed out of that number is the, what, we already put aside for that?
So no, that doesn't include the the thirty thousand that was spent on it already.
Okay, alright.
It, yes, it was backed out.
Okay, thank you.
Well, yeah.
Alright.
I have, I have to say, not that I'm against the carport, but to cover six cars, we're gonna spend almost a quarter of a million dollars. And we can't spend a half a million dollars for the COA?
No, I said we were going to, but I wanna make sure, let's not go back over this, I'll tell you after this. No, that's not the point, the point is I would like to spend more money on the senior center. I just wanna make sure.
Twenty years down the road.
No, 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 now.
Okay.
Now.
Okay.
But I just wanna make sure that we have all of our questions answered. I am not against building an addition on here at all.
Okay.
Okay, that that, we're both on the same page for that.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure that we have the right numbers and the project manager to oversee everything that we're doing.
And again, just to be clear to everybody, we're not asking to add to the project.
Right.
This comes after savings and contingency and savings from furniture and.
But it's 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 something we could do without if we had to.
Yes.
I'm not suggesting.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
That's why it's an add alternate, it certainly would've had to been an alternate.
Right, there were two other things, what were the other two things that we said, no, we're not gonna do? The other add alternates, and we're like, no, forget it. We just felt that the cruiser port was probably the number one.
Yeah, we didn't move forward with any of the alternates.
Right.
Yeah. To to give you an idea of um our contingency right na- right now is over seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, so if you were to to subtract that out, you'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of, I'll just use round numbers here, but four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars left if you went to the carport. And then we have um items such as furniture, the radio and tower, utility company back charges, material testing, move costs, dispatch consoles. All of which we expect to see as savings in those line items um because of the way that we've budgeted for them. So, and that will come back um over a hundred thousand dollars. So if you're around four seventy-eight now, you add a hundred, you know, puts you at at five seventy-eight, so that's just using some round numbers, but.
Right. So the goal was to make sure that with this project, or at least my goal was, to make sure that we gave money back to the town. And I think that even with the cruiser port, we'll be able to give a significant amount of money back to the town. And if we don't do it now, even though we put everything in for years from now, it's only gonna cost us more money in the long run, so. George, any other questions?
No.
Okay. Charlie, questions?
Um, just what was the actual figure, I couldn't hear the actual figure for the addition.
Go ahead, Andy.
Two hundred and twenty-six thousand.
No.
Nope.
No, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Three hundred and seventy-eight.
And twenty-six cents.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, uh, my my view is, like Lisa, you said, uh, to build it at a later time would only add more money to it. And my other view is that we have told the people that we're gonna build this police station, it's going to be done right. And uh, you know, we're not gonna have to go revisit it uh at a later time for a very long time. And so with that in mind, I don't think it would be good to uh delay, I I believe we should be uh putting this uh cruiser port on.
Okay.
This, uh, we should highlight too, this does add thirty days to the overall schedule, 'cause this was not in the contractor's schedule to begin with, this is additional work. Um, so they've asked for that.
Thirty days to the contract?
This will add thirty days to their contract, yes. Um, so that puts them from um June sixteenth to July sixteenth. Um, we think they'll probably, well, I know there's still probably gonna be a lot of work going on there in terms of the tower and communication and bringing the the building out. So I don't think it's gonna affect the overall move-in date, um, but the contractor plans on being there longer.
It act- it actually almost helps us.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause it almo- it actually almost helps us with this because the tower just put us back anyway, so, right, so this might work together.
It's gonna be tight, but the contractor, when we met them with them today, wanted two months, and we said absolutely not.
Right.
Um, we can understand, you know, a month, because there is a lot of coordination in that area with the tower and the carport, um, if there's some drainage in there. So we could understand the month that they're asking for, but um, you know, the two months, we said no.
Aren't there contingency fees if we run past our due date that we discussed?
Well, was that's.
They gotta remobilize.
Well, that, uh, well, are you meaning, so?
The overall project.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's if they charge us, so this.
It's in the contract that they can, right?
That, well, they've agreed, we've made sure that they've agreed to thirty days in this price, they can, they're not gonna.
They're gonna add thirty days to the contract for for this, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
The price is in that two twenty-nine.
They get thirty days, but they're not gonna then send us a bill for thirty days of general conditions for being there.
And there's a real possibility that that June seventeenth, they, the tower might be exceeded also, which would require them to.
Well, we already know the tower's not getting delivered till June.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying they said it's a week to set up and then.
The foundation will be done long before that, but the tower doesn't hit the ground till June.
Yeah, so we're, it's really tight to the June seventeenth, I think. Anyway, we probably would've added a couple of weeks on anyway.
Yeah, and that's why we elected to leave thi- this tower up, not take it down as part of this contract. Um, if there is an issue with the the tower and timing of of the moving, um, yeah, well, we'd be, that they'd be dispatching out of the existing using that tower until communications are done, which has been talked about.
Makes sense. Alright, anybody have any other questions? Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Yes.
Does the new tower address the poor coverage in a sonnet?
So the way that we're gonna do the tower is, um, this is, the tower is specifically just for the police station, but we put, um, what do you wanna call them?
It's designed, uh, it's it's not just a communications tower for public safety, it's designed for cell carriers. Um, so that's kind of what what, uh, we originally had some pricing a while back for the same tower that we're moving forward with now. Um, and during that process, we had a um a vendor reach out to us and wanted to install a tower in the town and then basically rent it out to the town and some cell carriers. That didn't work out quite right, um, it wasn't really a path that the town or anybody really wanted to go down. So we're back with our original tower and it's designed to hold cell carriers, so that the town can go out, then get bidders and get carriers on the tower. And then the tower, the the town can get rent for those um carriers.
Okay, let me try my question.
Wait, yeah, you're you're saying, you're talking about radios.
I'm talking about.
Oh, sorry, yes, yes, that will, yeah, sorry.
Yes, that's why it's a hundred and eighty-five feet.
Okay.
The radius for the cell is a lot smaller.
Yes, definitely. We would never put up another cell tower, it was one of our major concerns that the, you know, the um the holes in in the communication between the police and a sonnet, so yeah, definitely.
I'm sorry, that was a question, I was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not not cellular coverage.
'Cause we don't have that either, so. Alright, anybody have any other questions, cares, concerns? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to move forward.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? No, alright, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstain?
Abso- opposed.
Okay. Alright, all set?
Okay, uh, I wanna talk to about one other thing, so. Uh, it's it's about, um, as you know, the town has decided to build the tower themselves and look to lease it out to potential um vendors for cell carriers and whatnot. So those vendors, they need equipment pads, which they pay for when they come in. So we've established a lay-down area over here where their equipment could be put over here and they would pull power from this pole. My concern is they have to get from their pads back to the tower. So, um, this doesn't have to be decided tonight, but I don't like, I just wanna put this forward as an idea that we may be here next week to talk about this. I wanna propose some conduit that goes underneath our drainage in our road. So that to get these vendors in to lease, we're not digging up anything that we had to do. This conduit would get them clear of everything we've done in under the road, that's these three lines here. We would need li- nine lines going out, nine six-inch conduit. And then from there, they gotta, they would pay for everything once we have uh vendors signed up. And again, the goal would be to pay for the tower and then actually make income off it for the town.
There was also a discussion about putting another pole there and how many transformers we could put in.
Yeah, that we, that actually went well.
Two hundred amp on each, yeah.
That actually went well, but we're just gonna leave that alone and we know it works, but that'll be the vendor's problem when they go do it. But we don't want the vendor digging up anything we did, so we wanna get them clear of everything.
And the conduit is six eight.
Time, 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 time.
It's on time material.
That has to go to the building committee before it comes to the board of selectmen, 'cause it has to be vetted through them first. Um, we already vetted the carport, so that's why you guys are here. But we're not gonna start talking about anything else on the project right now until we go through the police station subcommittee, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Alright. Alright, contract with PK valuation and a division of PK Capinos.
Yes, um, the original, the board had originally entered into a three-year contract um to with Capino. Um, due to the an irregularity in the procurement, uh, it's been determined that we can only do a one-year contract. So um I talked to the accountant about it and we're recommending that uh we enter into a one-year contract. A copy of which is in the packet for the board to endorse, to vote on and endorse. Uh, the amount is thirty thousand dollars, it covers the work uh regarding the recap and some of the valuation services that they provided.
So you just need us to sign a one-year contract?
Well, the assessors signed it first.
I I understand, so, but isn't there a warrant article that we voted on to cover this sum of money?
Yeah, it was, it, we're gonna have to rebid it for the additional two years. The con- the the article was so that you could do it for three years, any term, three years or greater, you're, you need a um town meeting action. This is, being a one-year contract doesn't require that.
So this contract ends on June thirtieth, twenty twenty?
Yes, they're gonna have to procure the next two years of the contract that that was originally a three-year contract.
So when we went to town meeting, we procured the amount of money.
Yep.
Now this is the last of that, or is this the first year of the next contract?
First year of the next contract.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so this is the first year of the next contract, but are we going out to bid?
Well, it's not gonna be a next contract, this is gonna be an independent contract that pays for the services that were rendered this year. And then they have determined what the next two years will, that will follow, what services are gonna be needed. And they're gonna have to procure those services.
So you want a contract from July first of twenty twenty to July first of twenty twenty-one?
No, it's gonna be a two, it's good, once again, it's gonna be a two-year contract. This will cover the work that would, basically, uh, for the recap and the reval. And this, this is the only way that at this point that we can move forward. Uh, they, for the additional services beyond this year, we're gonna have to re-procur those two additional years.
Okay, so we'll go back to the conversation that we had with the board of assessors that said that they were gonna cut back on some of this if they get if they get their new um head of assessing, so I guess.
That's, this is not gonna impact that.
Okay.
The the, what they're gonna do in the future hasn't been set out in in a procurement yet. So if their intention is they were gonna do field services that uh for the next two years, uh, twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, then the the bids that they're gonna be procuring for should be less any amount that they're gonna do in-house.
Do you have any questions, George?
No.
Do you have any questions, Charlie?
No, I I understand. The town meeting article was to fund the first year of the contract that we are going to now interrupt, so to speak. Have a one-year contract, then we'll go on from there on a new contract. So I have no problem with that, I'll make a motion that we uh approve the payment of uh to uh PK, it's yes, PK valuation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, January twentieth, ambulance abatements, it's my prerogative, Charlie. Ambulance abatements for um January twentieth, uh, the aggregate amount uh would be one oh two, seven forty-seven, thirty-seven. The write-offs, twenty-two thousand, one seventy, seventy-seven, and um for a total amount of one twenty-four, nine eighteen, fourteen. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion made.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number five, deficit spending for snow and ice. So the ta- uh, this letter is to request that your board take an annual vote to authorize overspending snow removal. Um, as this budget week is overdrawn by four hundred and two dollars. Um, please note that with the adoption of section seventy-four, chapter two eighteen, the so-called Municipal Modernization Act, the finance committee is no longer required to approve the spending, only the board of selectmen. Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a question for you.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we met, he has a question, go ahead.
Uh, since we've had so little snow this year.
That was my question too.
So, uh, like an explanation of why this is.
That was exactly my question and then.
If you listen, uh, listen, if you look at the email that's attached behind it, um, there is an explanation that was given to Kim from the highway department explaining how the the amounts that they need.
Can you explain that for us, for the camera? Can you explain that?
Uh, basically, I can read you the, the email, it's a pretty self-explanatory. The, the current deficit is three forty-five, twenty-four, but that does not include an additional eighteen thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and eighty-eight cents in pending payables, twelve thousand for salt, six thousand for plow drivers. Uh, I met with the highway surveyor and there have been five plowable events, uh, with other weather conditions that have required sand and salting only. Due to rainy increases for the drivers in the four-hour minimum, the minimum amount per plowable event is eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars for the contractors. In addition, the roads are treated before and after with one hundred tons of materials at fifty-five dollars and sixty-five cents for a minimum cost of five thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. In summary, each plowable event for just contractors and materials totals sixteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, then, when you consider the five employees at overtime for a minimum of four hundred dollars is seven hundred dollars. However, most events are eight hours or more, so the average cost is fifteen hundred dollars. Basically, each event is just over eighteen thousand dollars. With five events to date, that, uh, is a minimum of ninety-one thousand dollars plus other call-outs. The amount incurred, uh, to date seems reasonable, and then please, uh, feel free to forward this email and attachments to the board for their review.
Well, seems to me that we've totally underestimated our costs here.
Well, that has been a continuing issue because we only, I wanna say we, we, we don't fund the full amount. When we get to a certain point, uh, the board, he comes back and, and it's, uh, the money is then assessed back against the tax rate. Because we don't.
We write, we, we put it on the, um, we recap, when we do the recap, we just add the difference onto that, because once you go up, you can't come down, you can only keep going up. So, that's why we've estimated the last couple of years and then go by that. Because once you put it, once you increase it, you can't decrease it, so, um, we left it at, what, one fifty? I think it's either one fifty or one twenty-five on that one, I'm sure.
Uh, I don't think it's, I think it's one fifty, the, the upcoming year, I, I don't have that information in front of me. I wanna say it was, like, a hundred thou- I don't know.
No, it's more than a hundred, but anyway. So, they're looking for four hundred and two dollars, uh, but George, I'm with you. We really haven't, we've had a really quiet winter. And I think that the only way we can do this is we have to do a better tracking. So, maybe we look at all of our events the last couple of years, see what it's cost us, and then we'd ha- we would have a better understanding of what to expect when he comes in. True?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, there, you got a new job.
Oh, goody.
All right, so, um, I have a motion and I have a second, all in favor for the four hundred and two dollars?
Aye.
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 Okay, moving on. Um, write a first refusal for chapter sixty-one A, land at one oh seven Chase Road, parcel two forty-one to zero four zero.
There had been some discussion at the past meeting that we'd have never done this before, and, uh, we actually have done it. There's that section that's in the first page is another example of that. Uh, the parcel that he's talking about taking out, uh, because he's installing a ground-mounted photovoltaic, vol- voltaic system, is the overall part that he wants to remove is point one-one acres. The total parcel is fourteen point one acres, is currently taxed under sixty-one A as agricultural land. So, uh, he's just requesting to take a small little piece out of the sixty-one A parcel to put a photovoltaic system in.
Motion approved.
I have a question.
Hold on. Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Does this, uh, parcel affect the town-owned cemetery? And if it does, would it interrupt the possible future acceptance of land that came out of chapter for the remain, remnants, remnants of that parcel in the future? Otherwise, does the cemetery commission have any interest in that parcel?
So, uh, Mike McHugh's on the cemetery commission, so he would be the first one to say, no, you can't do this, so, um.
Has any, something?
We did contact planning board, there, there was nothing, they, they came back, assessors, no. Conservation, they haven't voted on it yet, so, but I, they, they didn't anticipate that there was gonna be any potential use for it.
So, why don't we change the motion, um, contingent on approval from the conservation commission? Are you all right with that?
Probably cemetery.
And cemetery.
But, just so everyone remembers, it's, they wanna build a, uh, a facility for their own, uh, use, I believe, and they're, they're taking this land, they're, they're taking it out, it's part of the law. The, again, the question is, do we wanna purchase it or, or not? And so, I, I don't think we need to have that contingencies, I think it's, the, the vote should be that, are we going to, uh, exercise our option on it, or are we not? And my opinion is, I'm not, uh, going to think that the town should buy this land. So, my motion is to, um, you know, release the parcel of land described from sixty-one A.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, announcement, Department of Conservation and Recreation proposal to purchase thirty-three plus or minus acres undeveloped forest land at zero Howland Road, parcel two oh nine to one oh zero two. From Dennis De Moranville and Barbara De Moranville, um, Agar- Chil, um.
You're just a down.
We did.
It's thirty-three acres.
Yeah, so thirty-three, right.
Continue with.
What's number four?
That's the last one.
Seven.
That's the sixty-one A land.
Uh, number seven.
No. No, one oh, see, it says one here. That's the one we just did.
Yeah, we're down to seven now, aren't we?
Yeah, thirty-three plus, okay. So, thirty-three plus acres of undeveloped land at zero Howland Road. What is this for?
They basically just, uh, required by the, the state to give a hundred twenty days' notice of their intent. Uh, other than, I, I, I'm not sure what action, I guess if the board said no, they would probably reconsider it. But given that it's going to maintain, uh, be maintained as undevelopable, open space, uh, natural resource protection, his historic preservation and passive recreation, there's no reason why the board would probably wanna.
So, this, right, so this is gonna be for the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, so this land will be set aside and to keep pristine for the town of Freetown. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion made.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Main Street, card of business study, number nine.
Okay, um, at the last Economic Development Committee meeting, there was a discussion regarding doing an inventory of lands, of parcels of land that are located from the town hall, uh, to down to the Fall River line. Uh, specifically, at the time, we were talking about the sewer extension project and the, uh, the need to gather data, uh, to, because any application that's filed, um, particularly, for example, mass, uh, works projects, require certain data regarding who's gonna benefit from, uh, the extension of a sewer line, and they give credits towards the application if there's, uh, you know, if it's a benefit to eliminate blight, if there's a benefit to help low and moderate income individuals, uh, and if there's, uh, um, uh, the potential for job development to low and moderate income individuals. So, what we hit, we do is, we have, uh, twenty hours of time that's provided, actually, it's forty hours. We, we take twenty and the planning board takes the other twenty. And the thought was, uh, that, uh, we could use the twenty hours to, uh, do this basic legwork that we, that we just don't have the staff to do, uh, which would involve having a consultant come in, collect data on the parcels, owner contact information, lot size, list of all of the utilities, um, and also, uh, the, a secondary purpose would be to put together a marketing plan, uh, that would develop a land inventory that we could put on the website and talk to developers about should interests arise further down the road where there are business parcels. Um, I'm suggesting that the consultant also look at the top ten parcels of land along that, I'm calling it the Asonet Business District Corridor, um, and determine what the highest and best use of that land might be, uh, so that we can at least estimate, uh, potential, uh, development in terms of what types of businesses that can go there and what types of jobs that would be created and the kinds of jobs.
Didn't we do this once before for that area?
I'm not aware of that.
Lisa?
I don't remember. We did, um, we did, um, a zoning study, but we didn't do, um, an economic development study. I just, I'm tired of big businesses coming into town, and we're fighting that now on t- on two things. I really wanna encourage smaller businesses to come in town, mom-and-pop operations, and I think that if we can look at this and see, have a better say on what we wanna see come into town and have a joint venture with the planning board and the Economic Development Committee, so we're all on the same page of what we wanna see in that small little area, I think that the twenty hours would be put, put to good use.
Right, and the other thing I'm asking is that they take a look at our existing zoning and make, uh, potential recommendations regarding any zoning changes that might make, uh, the parcels that are currently identified or to be identified.
That would be important.
Yeah, I do too, yeah.
More developed.
Absolutely.
So, um, I did actually reach out to, um, Bridgewater State University and to, um, UMass Dartmouth to see if they could get some interns, it was no, they, I didn't get any responses back. They, they, you know, they basically wanna pay the kids money in terms of they're doing, you know, particularly grad students, struggling to survive anyway.
Perfect, um, I have a motion, uh, I have a motion to accept, do I have a second?
Uh, yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, um, utilizing town roads, number ten, eleven, and twelve.
Madam Chairman, if I could.
Yes?
If no one, if no one has any problem with it, I kinda recommend that we group these all three together.
That's what I'm just doing.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
No problem.
Same page. So, uh, um, mixtape is April fifth, twenty twenty, Tour de Creme is May seventeenth, twenty twenty, and on your left, triathlon is July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Anybody here from, okay. Um, everything, they've done it last year, we had no problems. Okay, um, and it's gone through police, fire?
Uh, I never heard back from the police chief.
Okay.
I was, I was signed off on by the fire department.
Okay.
So, it'd be, all of them would be pending, uh, review by the police department.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, engineering, Cliff Drive, drain, drainage project, number fourteen. Engineering Oak Lawn Road Drainage, number fifteen, resurfaced Green Lawn Road, uh, number sixteen, resurfaced Wood Lawn Road, number seventeen, resurfaced Highland Ridge Road, and number eighteen, um, Mill and Cave, South Hillside Street. Uh, Mike McHugh is not attending.
I, I had asked him, he said these, basically, these are all, uh, the projects have been approved and this is just authorizing the reimbursements.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, minutes from February third and February tenth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
I'll make the motion.
You second it?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town administrators report.
Okay, uh, I just have a few things. Uh, one is, I just wanted to let the board, I know that I followed up regarding the Four Corners sto- uh, study. Uh, as the board's aware, we, as part of, uh, the outcome of the bridge project, there was concern about the Four Corners and how traffic flows in that area. Uh, I did talk to Elise, uh, Lisa Estrella Pedro at DOT, uh, actually, she's at Serpad, she's working with DOT. And, uh, it's too early in the season for them to do it, but we are at the top of the list, and, uh, they start going around in April, and to get the counts and to make the recommendations. So, I'm hoping to have something at some point in late April, early May, for the board regarding recommendations from DOT on the Four Corners. Um, I've been working, uh, with the town of Cushnet, uh, the, uh, conservation agent, Merrill Lee Kelly, uh, regarding the Freetown Screw property, one of the recommendations that came out of a meeting that I had had with Mass Development, uh, with Serpad and with our, uh, former consultant, uh, one of the, uh, potential outcomes that they were looking for was for us to have a wetlands delineation done. Um, we didn't have any money in the budget, I was able to, uh, basically, uh, re, uh, I guess, re, uh, reoccur, reprocure, uh, five thousand dollars of unused funds from the MVP grant. I got approval from that, from the state to do that, so Merrill Lee is willing to do it for free. Uh, but I think that it's imperative that not only do we do the wetlands delineation, but we also do some soil sampling down there, uh, to protect the interests of the town. So, I'm gonna use the five thousand dollars, uh, of those funds that have been re-purposed, uh, for that purpose to actually, uh, to have some soil samples and for us to determine what the best.
Yeah, before we make any decision on that land, we need to know what's in that soil, because the last thing we need to do is have, have a brownfield project on our hands.
I, yeah, I totally agree. Um, the streetlights, uh, we ordered, um, they're gonna be delivered to the highway department within the next couple of weeks. Uh, the contract, uh, we, we're part of a five-town contract for installation, uh, which is gonna be awarded tomorrow. Um, I'm expecting that we're probably looking at installation in April of the new streetlights, the LED lights. Um, uh, s- at the, uh, town meeting, um, we had discussed this earlier that, uh, um, the, at the conclusion of the meeting, uh, Tim had spoken to Mark Rich. It was determined that we don't need to post a new warrant, uh, for, uh, the additional, uh, for the follow-up meetings, per se. That's just a continuation of the existing town meeting from Saturday. Uh, I also want to know, the board to know, uh, that we, the article deadline is Thursday, uh, the twenty-seventh. Uh, to date, we've got three special town meeting articles, five articles for the annual. Um, in March, we're gonna start be, looking at the articles as well as going through the final budget as Kim and I have prepared it. And, uh, we could have the departments in at that time in March, so that we can, you know, have a finished product hopefully by the end of, um, of March, in time to, uh, you know, have it posted in April. So, April, you know, late April.
Okay, questions, comments, concerns? Charlie, any questions?
No.
Okay. Um, moving on, board, uh, scheduling of the next meeting of the board of selectmen. When is that?
Uh, it's currently scheduled for March second, but Charlie had mentioned that he wanted to move that if possible.
Yes?
It's Tim done, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
I, I couldn't hear if Tim was done or not.
Yeah.
Um, I will be returning, uh, the plan is for Tuesday, the fourth. That, um, I understand that the next evening, the, uh, Wednesday, that the planning board has kind of reserved the facility there. So, I don't know if you want to go further down the week or if you want to, uh, go to the second Monday, uh, of March for our, uh, first meeting of the month.
You mean the sec- yeah, you wanna do, you'll have two meetings in a row, two Mondays in a row?
That's fine.
Okay, yeah, we'll wait till the fir- second Monday in March.
Okay.
And then we'll do two weeks in a row.
All right.
Okay. All right, over to the board of health. Security cameras at the Freetown Station.
He wanted to pass that over.
Yeah, we, we actually, uh, doing, uh.
No, we can discuss it, actually, I didn't, I'm sorry, David. I was going to pull this because we don't have, uh, any of the specifics on the cameras and the cost of installation. But I just wanna make sure we're all on board, that we need.
Yes.
Good surveillance.
Yep.
We had an incident where somebody fell in a dumpster, you know, there could have been a major problem, lawsuit.
So, why don't we, um, create a warrant article placeholder for that?
Why do we need it?
So, we'll, we'll.
We don't have the money for it, that's all.
Oh, I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna be less than two thousand dollars, I believe.
We, but we do have money for that, or don't?
I, I could see if there are monies available that we could potentially use, I don't have an answer.
Get a transfer from, uh.
You could do it. You could do it.
You wanna do a transfer?
Sure.
You could do it from FinCon.
Okay.
Okay.
But we're trying to get the, the Health Office to finish getting the quotes.
Yeah, absolutely, well, I think it's needed anyway, so that's good. Okay, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, perfect. All right, um, under Personnel, acting, working foreman while temporary foreman is on vacation.
Uh, I have spoke to Eric, Eric is not taking the week, the full week off. Um, he is probably only gonna take Friday off, so we're only gonna need a temporary foreman for one day. Or whether we could operate without a foreman for that one day.
We'll be fine.
I know that one gentleman has offered to step up in case, you know, we need somebody to fill in for that day.
I'll leave that decision up to you.
All right, that's fine.
Are you good with that? Are you good with that, Charlie?
Um, okay, I didn't quite get all of it, but I got, I got the general.
Eric's only gonna be gone for one day, I'm not.
Yeah.
David will take care of that.
I have no issue with that.
Okay, um, Associate Member of the Planning Board effective on February nineteenth, twenty twenty. The Planning Board usually makes a recommendation to the board and we just go along with that? They have not had their meeting yet?
They are actually meeting right now, uh, just started, uh, so.
All right.
They've asked, because they have the public hearing before our next meeting, they're asking that we just kinda go along with their recommendation.
And we usually do, so if you don't mind making a, uh, or if it's up to you guys.
I'll make a motion uh, that we accept their recommendation uh, upon this. I I don't need to have any additional input myself, so I would make that uh, in a motion.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do you wanna take this over? Cause these are yours, do you wanna do that and talk about um, the hiring?
Uh, I'm sure.
Okay.
Uh, we've interviewed uh, four candidates for that position and uh, we are offering.
George is gonna have to speak up, I can't hear him at all.
Okay, we interviewed uh, the four candidates for the uh, position uh, for the transfer station attendant. We are hiring one for the hours uh, that uh, we need it. We're hiring two, I believe.
Three.
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 As per diems, so that we always have a backup for if people are out. And we're just uh, waiting for the, with the drug testing?
Uh, Cory testing.
Cory testing.
Cory, Cory. Do we do drug testing on new employees like that?
We don't.
No, okay, so we're waiting on the Corys and we'll offer them the positions.
All right.
And uh, that's basically it.
Okay, so um, do you wanna make a motion to approve?
Uh, motion made.
Do you have a second?
All right, um, I have an issue with the first candidate. I believe that uh, you have recommended Roger Dimon. Uh, I understand that he is a retired municipal or Massachusetts government employee and therefore, as we've had in the past, we're going to have a problem with, um, if he works the twenty hours a week on a annual basis, we're going to have him go over the time limit that he can have. And we've had this in the past. My issue here is uh, clearly this, the requirement is that the person work twenty hours a week. And if this individual cannot work twenty hours a week, then he doesn't meet the job uh, description. And we've had a discussion in the past about having job descriptions and I think that it is, would be a very bad precedent if we end up, we have this, we have a job description and we go and we hire somebody that can't fill the job description. Um, especially with the fact that there are three other candidates. So my uh, motion would be to table this uh, at this time. Um, and like I said, I'm not, uh, I think it's a a serious uh, issue that could uh, oh, grow with other people who maybe are employed by the town and then they no longer can, for some reason such as health problem, they can't fulfill the duties such as, let's say, lifting weight of fifty pounds if that's part of their job description. So I I I don't think we should be going and hiring somebody who cannot fulfill the job description. I think that's the case here, so it's still, we can get, I I can get a little bit firm of grip on it. I would uh, recommend that we table the matter.
All right, Charlie, we did look into that matter because it is a serious matter. And uh, the long and short of this is that he can work as many hours as he wants. So if he takes a job, he'll be required to work the hours. What happens with his retirement pay is his issue, not the town's.
All right, well, George, I like to be there and to have a little bit more, I I'm, as we, as we know, I'm I'm remotely uh, participating and I think that uh, I would like to see some documents and have a much more in-depth discussion.
No, Charlie.
We can have right now.
Don't worry about it. All right, so, Char- um, George and David met with this person and uh, who else was there?
Eric.
Eric?
David was there.
Okay, and they vetted him, um, that's a recommendation from the Chair of the Board of Health. I am totally understand your issues, but I'm relying that David is telling us it's okay, George is telling us it's okay. Um, you you have, you have been not here, um, if you go on Freetowners, you will see that there are a lot of people upset right now because the transfer station had been closed several times because it had to be and that is totally excuse, you know, um, but right now, we need a person. So I'm gonna second George's motion.
All right, um, well, if I may, uh, I think we should appoint them all as per diem then.
There's no language in the contract for per diem.
Right, so we're gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna second your motion.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
No.
Okay, um, and um, I need a motion for Joshua Teff to the Cable Advisory Committee effective February nineteenth, twenty twenty. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion made.
Second, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was that motion for the transfer station for all of?
All of them.
All of the individuals?
As, as denoted. Yes, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion made.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.